Okay, I'm gonna call our village board meeting for September 20, 2021 to order. Roll call, please.
Nala Frye?
Here.
Phil Willam?
Here.
Bill Random?
Here.
Chris Elder?
Here.
Aaron Moran?
Here.
Sam Kaufman?
Here.
Kerry Hertzberg?
Here.
Okay, first thing we have is confirmation of open meeting compliance, public postings, official notices, and online availability.
I can confirm that the draft agenda was published in the Wanakee Tribune on September 16th. The final agenda was posted at all three village voting locations on Friday, September 17th, and the final agenda and packet were made available online on September 17th.
Thank you, Caitlin. Next, we have consent agenda. Would anybody like anything pulled or look for a motion?
I move to approve items one through two on the consent agenda.
Motion by Nala Frye?
Second.
Second by Aaron Moran. Any other comments? Yeah, call the question, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Closed. As have it. Public comment, is there anyone here who would like to make a comment on anything on or off the agenda this evening?
Yep, I have four slips of paper. The first one to turn in was Mike Weber.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Mike Weber, and I live in Wanakee, 1400 Amana Court. And I'm also the Vice President of Sales, Client Service, and Health Promotion for Dean Health Plan. And I know that you're considering the insurance options tonight, and I have a very simple message for you. First of all, I want to say thank you for considering us. Thank you for taking the time to that this very difficult decision. I also want you to know that we are committed to providing you high-quality care and being a partner with you as we move forward. Over the last few weeks, we've really made a commitment to communicate with your employees and your staff, and our commitment to you is that we will continue to do that. I'm also going to be here during the meeting in case any questions come up, anything that you feel is needed to address. And again, I sincerely appreciate you taking the time to consider us and look forward to answering any questions that you might have.
Thank you. Next.
Lynda Ashmore?
There's two different things I wanted to address. One is, there's an item on the agenda for the sale of property in closed session, village-owned property. And that's been on the agenda closed session probably three or four times now, at least. And my question is, and I know you can't answer this, but it is on the agenda, why is it not being bid out? And maybe it has to do with it being affordable, but again, when you put stuff into closed session, people wonder, what are you doing? So I would like a better explanation of that before you go into closed session. And the other thing is dealing with the DEI initiatives. I support them wholeheartedly. I know that there's a separate one for the Ho'ochunk proclamation, but DEI encompasses so much, and the more you know, the better you do. So thank you for doing what you're doing.
Thank you. Caitlin?
Mary Heimbecker?
I would just like to express my continued support for the village moving forward with DEI initiatives. There, this is so much more than just about race. It is about accessibility for disabled and less able people, building, people need to get into sidewalks that people can easily maneuver, housing that people of all walks of life can afford. The diversity in village staff is also very rare. It'd be nice to see more diverse people on our village staff. There's so much work that still needs to be done, and I look forward to seeing the progress in the near future that the village makes with this. It's been nice seeing some, and I'd like to see it keep moving forward. Thank you.
Thank you.
Robert McPherson?
Good evening, Village Board. It's been a while since I've been here, so it's nice to be back in person rather than talking through my phone. I wanted to express support for DEI initiatives. I was concerned, there was a group that claimed to represent my neighborhood came out here a few weeks ago, so that they were against DEI. They attacked the white racial frame book study group we did. If any of them had come to that meeting, or to those meetings, they would have understood what was going on there, and that there was nothing really to be afraid of. It was learning, and all opinions were welcome, and nobody was told that their opinion was wrong. I think it's very important that the village continues to move forward with its DEI initiatives. I think it's a core part of what we worked with with affordable housing, and I think that there's a lot where that dovetails. My second, second part of my comment is, I would like to express that some concern with the direction of the CDA. I know they're gonna be considering a new TID, but we really aren't seeing a lot of movement on all of the recommendations that the Housing Task Force made. It would be great to see the CDA pick that back up, or somebody pick it back up. We still haven't addressed senior housing affordability in any way whatsoever, which was one of the takeaways from the group. So I just feel it's important, as a former member of that committee, to just express that we should continue to move forward on those items that we recommended, so that it can contribute traction, and that some people can get some help in the village. Thank you.
Thank you.
That's all.
Anyone else in the audience wish to address? Ted?
Got one, just a note of positive news to all who, a good number of people in this room made Wana Fest, or October Fest, the spectacular weekend that it was. I know those of us working there were just astounded with, it was great weather, and people came out like crazy, so it was a great weekend. The one, Art on Main, there's the nine pieces that we had displayed on Main Street this year. We held an auction to benefit the Create Wanakee Committee and Enders Manufacturing Company Foundation, and those auctioned off for over $7,000. So that, that was a good project, and we always enjoy showing off the creativity of our citizens that way.
Thanks, Ted. And for all those who made that possible, and were willing to spend their time and resources, everything to have it go off, thanks to our police fire EMS, everybody for being prepared, and taking care of any issues that did arise, and just good job overall. All right, next we have, any others? Is that everybody? Okay, good. Public hearing. That's our first item, public hearing, discuss and take action on Ho'chuck Nation land acknowledgement.
Quick introduction, we did review and present the, kind of a, sort of an initial reading of sorts of this land acknowledgement. This version of the acknowledgement is identical to what Chris read, maybe it was a couple months ago now, when we also had representatives from the Ho'ochunk Nation here to thank us for taking the time to consider an acknowledgement. So Chris asked that this be scheduled for public hearing to gain additional public input, so we're happy to do that today. The, the Ho'ochunk tribe still remains very interested in this action. I informed them of our work, so they know that tonight we're considering it again, and happy to answer questions you have, and certainly receive public comments.
Perfect, thank you. So I'm gonna first off open it up to the public for any comments that you'd like to make. I know we had a couple earlier, but if people want to make any additional?
I have some slips for the public here.
Perfect.
First one is Lynda Ashmore.
I support what you've been doing. I know that there's been extra time that Chris has put in, Todd's put in with the university program to work on the university, to get to this point, to having the land acknowledgement. And I think it's a positive step. Wanakee is more than just all the white people we see in this room, you know? There's a lot of different, different races and, and cultures and everything that goes into being Wanakee, and so I think this is really a positive step. So I support it wholeheartedly.
Thank you.
Mary Heimbecker?
I just wanted to say that I support the action on the acknowledgement of the Ho'chuck Nation land. That's it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Robert McPherson?
Also strongly supported. I think it's beyond passive that we do this. I would hope that this is the beginning of continued conversations with the Ho'chuck Nation. I think it's very important that we acknowledge as a community that there is an ask in some areas, when, you know, you start with the land acknowledgement, then you start looking at appropriate reparations, that's a dirty word in some circles, but it's definitely something that has been talked about by some of the other nations. Some communities have taken their money, especially when they've had loopholes during the COVID years, to look at seeing what they can do for those communities. This is important, I mean, this is a huge step for us to admit that, you know, we're acknowledging that who held this land before us. I know much of the history of this village tends to start with when the white people arrived, not when the Native Americans were here. But I would really stress that we should not follow any sense of complacency and think that the mission is done with this land acknowledgement, and that we look at future ways that we can contribute to not just the Ho'ochunk Nation, but the other nations as well, that may lay claim to the land that we stand on today. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else in the crowd? Anybody come? Easy group tonight. Quiet group tonight. Everybody wants to get to the Packer game, I feel like right now. Like, get going, Chris. So, all right, I hope that's not the case, but I guess I'll comment first, I usually don't, but I kinda started this process about probably three years ago with Tim DeGora, and just had a lot of conversations with him, and how we could get this roll, the ball rolling, and then the university came into it, and we had opportunities there, trying to figure out how we could do it within our 150 years, which is great that we're able to do that. And then make sure that the public was informed. I felt like when we read this the last time, we really didn't have enough time for the public to adjust, Roberta had it in the paper, so on and so forth. People are here this evening in support of it. I haven't had a single resident come up to me and say anything negative about what we've been trying to accomplish here in regards to this, so I'm gonna be in support of it, and I hope all of you are as well. Comments?
Could you close the public hearing?
I closed the public hearing before I talked. Maybe not, but no, I did.
Okay.
So I'm gonna go back and say that. So I made my public comment, I guess, during that public conference here, anyhow. So, any, any other comments from, from folks? No? Everybody seems like a thumbs up. Would you like me to read what we're gonna be putting into order? I'm gonna do my best.
Did you practice that word?
I have several things I've put in here. So, the acknowledgement reads as follows. "The village of Wanakee acknowledges that the land we occupy is dejope ancestral territory of the Ho'ochungada Ho'ochunk Nation, people of sacred voice. Ho'ochungada are stewards of these lands and waters since times immemorial. Settlers attempted to forcefully remove them from their homelands by exploiting a series of lands' concessions and treaties, including the Treaty of 1832. However, the Ho'ochungada resisted those, these conquests and asserted their sovereignty as a nation. We address this trend of disposition by upholding Ho'ochungada o'shka, way of life, sovereignty, culture, language, and environmental practices. Acknowledging these atrocities is only the first step towards reconciliation. Through relationship-building, education, and action, the village will advocate for a shared future with the Ho'ochungada Nation." Does that need a motion?
Chris, you did a nice job. I recommend we approve the Ho'ochunk Nation land acknowledgement.
Motion by Phil Willam?
Second.
Second by Sam Kaufman. Any other comments? Yeah, call the question, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Closed. As have it. Next, we have our new business. First item is discuss and take action on the 2022 health insurance. Caitlin, are you introducing?
Yep, I'm introducing, once I get. Joining us tonight is Al Jaeger, who's our insurance broker, who helps the village. Is this the wrong dongle? But Caitlin, I don't, that dongle doesn't, yeah, work on our newer ones.
I'll see.
So included in your packet was a brief introduction memo from myself. We are currently, we currently provide single and family health insurance to our employees through courts. We transitioned onto the state plan back in 2016. At that time, we went with courts, and we've been with courts since then.
I think you'll have to forward it to me.
Yep. So while we do this, I'll turn it over to Al. Al can introduce himself, and then we will get this PowerPoint going.
Good evening, Al Jaeger. I work with USI, been working with not only the village for, since the transition, actually several years prior to the transition, as well as public employers throughout, throughout the state, and certainly concentrated within the Dean County area. And in terms of what's, the summary tonight will be largely just presenting around where we were, where we are, and then ultimately, you know, what the decision looks like that you're looking to make. Sorry, I'm a little dependent on what the presentation is for sake of flow, but I guess, does it make sense to ask questions before we dive in?
So, a little bit more background about where we are right now. If you remember, two years ago, courts gave us a two-year bid, and the second year was this year. We went out for bid again this year, and courts presented itself with a 13.9% increase in premiums for our, our plan, which prompted us and the insurance review committee to say, hold on, what else is out there? Because that's, that's a pretty large, large increase for our, our network, or our employees and our budget to swallow. So that's where we're at right now. Since then, we've been engaging with that employee health insurance group, so they've been along with Al and I and Todd in this whole process, and the PowerPoint's coming up right now.
And I think it's also important to state that we're not alone in terms of the village of Wanakee. We're not alone in what we're facing and dealing with. And part of that is courts have recently gone through some adjustments in how they go through their rating, their pricing, and what that translates to is significant increases in many instances. So from an agenda standpoint, can I address the background, current state, some benchmarking, proposal summary? Caitlin, in terms of the staff feedback and overall survey, summary accordingly. We touched on some of these pieces already. Since the transition, feedback largely weighed the decision to move with courts versus the two finalists were courts and Dean when we originally had transition. The rates being, increases being more substantial, and it's, again, we're not alone with other area public employers, the state plan itself, the ETF local plan itself, also experiencing significant increases. We have regional meetings that include other cities, other villages, and City of Madison, for example, weighed in and spoke to the double-digit increases they experienced, specifically with the ETF plan. The other piece, from a spend standpoint, it's one thing to have the rate increase from a unit cost, single and family, but the other piece is, we also have more staff enrolling, and that's beyond growth, it actually substantial enrollment, and part of it is, we have an attractive offering. We have, from a premium contribution, we'll go through some benchmarking and demonstrate it, but we have an attractive offering of how much it costs to be on the plan. We also have an attractive offering in terms of what we put into the side account, the old savings account. And, you know, beyond that, staff are familiar with UW Network, they've spoken more than once in that regard. The part of, just maybe a half step back in the discussion is, when we look at, what are we looking at, right? Kind of moving around. When we look at the equation, you look at cost, and you look at benefits, and in many instances, it's a balancing act of, what are we doing? We're attracting and retaining staff members. And we'll be talking a little bit more about both in, in the end. What is it that we need to do from a benefits standpoint? So we have healthcare trend, and some other dynamics in terms of the evolution of healthcare, and we're not doing it in a silo. We're not making a, you know, an assessment process just within our own situation. We're looking at what best practices look like, what our peers are doing. So it's certainly a big part of compensation. And the other piece is, from a turnover standpoint, what's, what's the right decision here? Hiring, onboarding, all those, morale, leadership, productivity, all those are dynamics that are part of the equation of what makes sense, again, not just from a retention, but attraction of new staff. Benchmarking, so when you go through some of the benchmarking, what is the key piece here? We recognize we're dealing with the employment pool, it's, unemployment's very low, and attracting, getting new staff members becomes more and more of a competitive demand. So when we look at breaking that down, it's not just rates, you know, the plan design, the payroll, and the overall value is what we look at when we look at the peer comparison. Who did we look at? So, much of the interest from the village standpoint was comparing to a lot of your peers. Caitlin's got a handout, so if you have a little better font. When we look at City of Melton, Sun Prairie, Mount Forest, for the most part, the forest speaks, a lot of the peers that are smaller are with the ETF plan. Why is that? Well, as we get to our size and larger, we can have some of our own experience, and generally speaking, that's to our advantage. Meanwhile, when we look at, how do we bear and compare, there's a couple of key things that you see highlighted. But I had mentioned earlier, employer contribution, we have more participation than we had in the past, and a big part of that is, you, in how we compare with, we're, as a village, we're paying 95% of the premium contribution. What's that mean? Well, when we look at our rates, single 509, family 1266, 1,266 a month. What the village picks up is a majority, what the staff pays in a given month, is $25 a month on a single plan, $63 on a family plan. So when you look at that from a contribution standpoint, with, part of the reason that is as low as it is, we have a high deductible, so we have a $3,000 single, $6,000 family deductible. Meanwhile, we offset that with the $2,500 single, $5,000 family HSA. So each year, we, we contribute and offset the majority of the deductible. We look at our peers, and you see left to right, 12.6% versus our 5%. Specifically, Sun Prairie has a 2%, they can actually fund up, or you get as low as zero contribution, so they're unique in their contribution level, but the rest are more in that 12% range that the staff members are paying, especially with the state plan. The forest is also in the 5% range. So, other than one peer, we're significantly less, where you see some examples where family contribution is well over $300 in a given month. Those tend to be, again, with the ETF scenario. Any additional thoughts on that before I move on from the peer comparison?
No, we just know that the board always asks us, what are our peers doing? Have you gathered this data to help with the conversation?
So, two key things when we talk about peer comparisons, I had mentioned. One is the contribution amount. What are we ultimately paying? And from the employee, the staff members lens, what are they paying? And we're certainly in a very, very favorable comparison in that regard. And then from a plan design, by definition, our deductibles higher, but because of the high deductible, we were able to have lower premiums relative to the peers. In terms of 1,200 versus if you look across 1,400, 1,500, 1,900, you know, many 1,900s, et cetera. So, let's call it 500 a month less, in many instances, 600, 6 grand a year less. And the mantra that you'll see public employers throughout the state that use this approach is, rather pay our staff members than the insurance company, and this money goes into the agency. So, as far as some of the summary comparison points, we've been able to outperform from a rate standpoint. When we look at the other peers, as I summarized, the premium contribution we have is, other than Sun Prairie, less, and we have the HSA contribution. We did look at the competition, as Caitlin indicated, parent courts, GHC, Dean, and the ETF, the nationals, when I say nationals, the Uniteds, the Anthem, Blue Cross, any of the fee-for-service, they simply can't compete in this geography. There is a reason you don't see them in any of the other employers in this geography, public employers, it's just the HMOs have a corner in the market in the pricing and quality. Meanwhile, a big part of the focus and disruption with area employers right now is courts' pricing, 13.9%, no second-year caps. Dean provided 3.9% and a second and a third-year cap. So, we know that, risk-case scenario, 6.9% year two, 9.9% year three. And this one last way repeated, other employers are also going through that scenario. Okay? This may be a little busy, but it says a lot. I'm gonna have you focus on specifically, when you look at the court's pricing, you see enrollment of 87 members, and, excuse me? In aggregate, an estimate of 1.1 million, with the 13.9% increase, 1.3 million. Well, Dean put on the table more in the 1.2 million category, and with a buy-up option. While courts may have a buy-up option, you have 87 individuals that are all in the HMO. In order to get the pricing with that amount of the increase, and we did go back more than once to courts in terms of seeing if they'd improve, when it's all said and done, in order to get the pricing more in line, we went and looked at, okay, what if we moved the 95% closer to 88% contribution? Why? Well, when we looked at the peer comparison, a lot of the plans were in that 88% range. So what that would do to the village cost is, instead of it going up 14%, it would go up 5.5% on the, specifically the insurance. Whereas Dean, what they put on the table is 3.93%. You could continue to contribute 95% on the HMO. Meanwhile, you could contribute very similarly on the point of service, so, excuse me, staff members would ultimately have a choice of the HMO or the point of service. The HMO contribution amount on the Dean HMO would be the same as what you currently have available to staff. The point of service contribution amount would be available to what the new court's HMO amount is. Did you follow? Does that make sense to everyone? So that was kind of the highlighted contribution adjustments to make it more similar in terms of contribution or expenditure to the village. Anything else that you want to make sure I address in this specific?
I just want to answer any questions any board member may have about point-of-service model under Dean. If anyone's unfamiliar with that, it might be a good slide to talk about, because it has the entire plan design here, but basically through the point-of-service of Dean, those employees who wish to, if the village board decides to go to Dean, any village staff member who would like to maintain their access to the court, courts network, will enroll in that point-of-service plan, which allows them to access healthcare as they wish. The trade-off for those employees is, they then have to pay a higher, higher monthly premium, and they also have a larger out-of-pocket maximum. Just want to make sure people are aware of that. Yes, Nala?
How complicated is it for those who, you know, have, is there a lot of paperwork to do that, to keep UW? Does it have to be done continually every time they want to go see one of their old doctors? How does that work?
Just, so I'm answering the right question?
Right. So if they, if we went with Dean, Dean Care, and somebody wanted to stay with UW physicians, there's their specialists and everything, what's the process for that? And second of all, is it for sure that they would be able to keep their UW physicians and their, their healthcare teams?
Great, thank you. Good question. So, the process starts with open enrollment, which occurs in a month, month and a half, and once a year, you select, do I want the HMO or the point-of-service? So you have, once a year, to decide, do I want to pay the higher amount and have choice, or the lower amount and be aligned with the Dean number? If you choose the higher amount, as you suggested, the scenario, and you would be able to see your providers, with the point-of-service gives you that freedom of choice, and there's nothing that would prevent you from going to your specialist, or primary care, et cetera. The caveat Caitlin indicated, the deductibles will be the same, but once you hit your deductible, so if you're in a family plan, which a majority of the staff are in family, if you're in so if you're in a family plan, which a majority of the staff are in family, if you're in a family plan, as right now, if you hit six thousand dollars and spend, it's covered a hundred percent. If you're in a point of service and you're out of network, once you hit six thousand dollars, you're paying twenty percent after that six thousand dollars until you hit the maximum out-of-pocket, which is up, could be as much in a given year, an additional six thousand dollars. Okay? So it may not be difficult in terms of the process, but it may be expensive for those individuals that may be unfortunate to have very high claims. So an additional out-of-pocket, that's twenty percent. And then the other piece would be, for the most part, Dean has an arrangement with the UW on specialty. I'll say for the most part, not necessarily car block. But there may, primary care tends to be an issue where they may bill more than what Dean recognizes as acceptable. So there may be instances of balanced billing above and beyond what the deductible amount is. So the two, to answer your question, two specific things, right? One is additional twenty percent if they are unfortunate to have a lot of claims, two, there could be some surprise though. Okay?
Great.
Anybody else? Okay? So back to some of the other area villages in the area. The forest, one of the things, main things they did is they offered an additional plan and they changed their contribution level. So they went from ninety-five percent to ninety-one percent in terms of their premium contribution.
Al, can I just stop you for a second? This is when we asked this area employers, what are they doing in 2022? That first graph showed you what they currently have in 2021. This is answering the question of what are you expecting in 2022?
Thank you.
Yeah, you're welcome.
Failed to frame it very well, so appreciate that.
That's all right.
So I think that probably is one significant example. Beyond that, what you see from an evolution, City Middleton is also, they've been talking a lot with the Middleton Cross Plains Area School District, Middleton Cross Plains Area School District have, two-thirds of their staff have been with Unity, now courts since nineteen ninety-six. So twenty-five, twenty-six years we've worked with them and they had courts. As of January first, they're consolidating everyone to Dean for the reasons that are largely sustainability and engagement standpoint. So the City Middleton is looking, they're in the same process we are right now in terms of converting as well. That's probably the main updates. The village, the forest went down the path of increasing contribution. Middleton Area District being nearby, they converted to Dean, they made the decision. And the City of Middleton is more so looking at the potential switches, lots.
So the health insurance review committee, after we had all this information, thought it was important to ask for feedback from all employees. So we published a survey and we got ninety-three employees to respond. The full survey results were included in your packet. So I will save you from reviewing all of them. But the most, I think one of the most important questions we asked was please select the statement above that's most important to you. And the two statements were, are the current network of doctors and hospitals you have most important to you? Or is the cost of health insurance premiums for your paycheck most important to you? And you'll see there that sixty-three percent of our employees stated that the current network, their current network of doctors and hospitals, so courts, is most important to them. And if you read that narrative, we did outline to them that they acknowledged by selecting that, that they may need to pay more in their month or out of their paycheck monthly to maintain access to that network. And then you see that thirty, about thirty-seven percent of our employees said the cost of health insurance premiums for paycheck is most important to them. So about a sixty, sixty-three, sixty-seven, or thirty-seven split on that. If you answered, if an employee answered that their current network of doctors is most important to them, they saw the next question, which was question five, which outlined the Dean point of service plan. Explain to those employees that if the village decided to go with Dean, there would be this option of a point of service plan for you to pay a little bit more out of your paycheck, have a little bit more out-of-pocket to maintain access to your current network of doctors. So we asked them, how likely would they be to enroll in the point of service plan? And you see that fourteen or twenty-four percent of the fifty-eight employees who went to this question stated that they would likely to select a Dean point of service plan. Thirty-four percent or twenty employees said somewhat likely. So obviously those are the employees that'll look into it a little bit more, make a decision. And then forty-one percent said not likely. So when we look at this result, you can kind of, the way I take this result is, we have fourteen employees who no matter what, want to stay with their current network and they would, they would do the point of service plan. The rest of those employees are either going to look at other options they have with a spouse or make the difficult decision to transition their entire family to a new network of hospitals and doctors. So just kind of some more information for you all to consider. Because that's another question we always get asked from you guys as the village board, is what are employees saying about this? I believe we also gave an opportunity to village employees to email all of you directly about this decision because we know that this, this decision impacts, you know, eighty-seven employees and their families. So it's a very important decision for our employees.
Hold on, Nala. Al, do you have any more comments or are you ready for questions?
I think I would.
Do you want to finish and then get the questions?
Summarize the situation and answer.
Is that okay, Nala?
Yeah, that's fine.
So, I mean, in the end, the summary, right, is do you stay with courts, recognizing the staff contribution, going from twenty-five to sixty-nine dollars single a month, sixty-three to one seventy-three a month, family? Keeping the providers, keeping the plan design, keeping the HSA? With the reality that next year we're probably having the same conversation. Or converting to Dean and provider disruption with the UW focus. So there'd be provider disruption as we were talking through. Meanwhile, staff contribution, if they stay in the HMO, being effectively very, very similar to what they currently are and the point of service contribution being similar with the HMO would be before. It affords access to the UW, but it does have those two significant higher percentage if you go by the deductible and potential surprises, which at this point. And meanwhile, one of the questions was from an access, is there a commitment from an access standpoint? And the short answer we received back is yes, and there's a specific letter stating as much that access would be something there's a commitment to. So that was the summary of what I had to discuss.
Perfect. Perfect, okay. So I'm going to go last in this one. This probably surprises you because I do have an insurance background for twenty-five years. So I know a lot about this and, but I want to hear what you guys all have to say before I speak. Nala, you had asked first, so go ahead.
Okay, um, well, I'll give a comment before I ask my question. Insurance is a very emotional subject. Quite a few years ago, my husband's employment where we get insurance took away my, our insurance and we had to go with another company. And a primary physician that we had for many, many years, over twenty years, we had to say goodbye to and find somebody else. That was just part of the stress. The other part of the stress was trying to find a doctor in the group that was accepting patients and that we wanted to care for us and that took over two years. And it was a sad two years because we weren't getting the quality of care that we were accustomed to. So it's stressful, it's difficult. And I just wanted to make that comment. And one of my questions is, I didn't see it on the, on the survey questions, how many employees have the option of going to a spouse's insurance?
Yep, so we asked that question, that was question three on page forty-seven in your packet. We asked, are you eligible to enroll in another health insurance plan, i.e. spouse's employer? Forty-five percent said yes, while fifty-five percent said no.
Okay. The reason I think that's important is because, you know, I have sons and they, depending on what's going on with whoever's insurance, they go where they can, they sit down and crunch the numbers and then they go where the best situation is. So it's good, I think it's good for me to know that no matter, you know, no matter what we do, they, some people, most, many employees have another choice. And that's the one thing about insurance that makes me very sad is that I see it, and you may not agree, either one of you, but insurance takes choices away from people. It gets you into a place and you have no choice on it. And, and it's a very complicated, you know, thing. And I'm sad that the insurance system is, you know, set up the way it is, so thanks.
Okay, Gary, any comments, questions?
Well, I mean, I like the fact that, because I've had a couple of employees talk to me about the, you know, they really don't want to leave. You know, they don't want to leave their doctors, they don't want to leave the plan they're on. But at least they, we've provided an option for them. If that's concerning enough and they're willing to pay more to keep their doctors, they can do that. So we're giving them that option. I mean, it looks like in some cases.
You know, for years ago, courts, you might have been a low-cost provider, it's number, a number of communities that belonged to them. And now they've made adjustments where they're not as competitive. And I think from the builder's standpoint, you can be a little more serious than Dean just because of the pricing.
Well, I've been self-employed most of my life and I've always had to pay my own insurance. So I know it's a, it's a big deal and it's awfully expensive. But you know, I also recognize that that industry is seeing tremendous escalation and loss. But of course, um, they're being used a lot more, but I also recognize that feeling good, feeling that you're going to be protected is awfully important for employees and their families. That's the major concern for me.
Okay, Sam?
Well, my family has used insurance from one of the other municipalities on this sheet. Three years ago, we had to deal with a switch ourselves to another provider and it was very difficult for us in terms of quality of care and what we were used to. And this will be a difficult decision, absolutely, but I'm glad that we have options to consider.
Okay?
Sure. Yeah, I'm, this is a really good information, so thank you all. It really helps us make a really well-informed decision. I, I think what still keeps sticking out to me is like, back in twenty sixteen, like we chose courts over, staff preferred that. And then in all these surveys and in the feedback I've received directly, like, the wrong support or desire to stay. Especially, you know, two-thirds of people that, rather two-thirds of providers are likely or somewhat likely to then choose the other option. You know, then we're just putting such a drastic cost on them, I feel like, otherwise. Sorry. Members digesting.
So everybody's going to digest, there's a lot to digest. And if you're not an insurance person, this is a lot and overwhelming for people, just being frank with everyone. Al's been doing this for a lot of years, you know, obviously. Mike, right?
Yeah, twenty-three.
Mike's been doing this a lot of years too. And, you know, some of the questions that I had, one, has our experience been really bad in the last couple of years? Is that what's causing this increase?
A majority of it, yes.
So part of having a large experience is those people that have conditions and situations generally. Or you may have a lot of different things that are just, your drug costs might be super high for certain people. All those different things get factored into this. And more than likely, a lot of those employees are going to have those same situations. Which is why this is such a hard decision for any employer, because their employees are what run their business. They're the ones that take care of everything going on. So when Al talked at the very beginning about employees' satisfaction, you want to recruit, you want to retain our people, benefits are one of those things. And for many, many years, the public sector, that's what it was, benefits. Everybody went for benefits with that. Act ten changed things a little bit within that. We've done a very nice job, in my opinion, as a board over the years to make sure that our employees are well taken care of and what you saw tonight shows that. We have a very, very solid benefit package for our employees. And as I've listened to several of the employees and looked at the survey and see what's out there, some of the things that I would like us to explore, and I've talked to Caitlin and Todd, is our school district. And we're fortunate in the fact that Al does work with our school district as well, who has Dean right now, currently. And if you don't know, my wife is a school teacher, so we have Dean through there. And with her circumstance, question I have for you, Al, is can the Dean docs, if people choose the Dean and they have the point of service, can they get a referral over there to their current docs right now? And we do something with regards to that out-of-pocket? Can we max it as opposed to having twenty percent unlimited? Because that, that puts that employee in an awful position.
There is a, there is a max and the twenty percent, the max is an additional six thousand dollars. I know that's a, may not be, is that what you're asking?
I wanted, I wanted you to say it. So, yes, that's exactly it. So it's an extra six thousand dollars to our employees. Well, if our employees, and I'll just say, you know, if we have single-parent families and they've got three children, what's our maximum?
It's the additional six thousand.
Okay, so six thousand dollars for that single parent. That's a difficult thing to ask at this point for those individuals. With that, as I was bringing up, Al works with our school district. I would like to see us look at how we can partner with our school district potentially and how we can look at that. They have a clinic in town for the staff, that staff can go right here in town to a clinic outside of. It's through Dean still, but it's a great option for the employees. And my wife takes advantage of it, it's good for the health plan to do that. And I really want to study and look at that. That said, I'm in favor of keeping us in the Unity plan, sorry, courts, courts plan right now because of my belief that our employees are of value. And I know that we have to take care of and be good stewards of our tax dollars. I would love to argue with people that say we shouldn't be good stewards by not giving our employees as good of benefits as they have because that recruitment retention is a big deal. Every time we lose an employee, to hire that employee back, another one, and I know Phil has, you know, been running a business for, it's very difficult to get good employees. And once you've got your good employees, you want, you don't want them to leave. And this is one of our tools to be able to keep them. So that's kind of maybe a long-winded answer with it, but I try to look at what are the best interests of our employees? That said, I know that we're looking for direction, I think we need it pretty quick. Yes?
Yeah, that's, the next slide.
Like tonight is our, is our, our hope to get it done tonight. You know, going to the eighty-eight percent. Sure, I was just going to ask for any other question, but go ahead.
So you might have said this in the beginning, but we signed, we have a two-year contract and then is this another two years? This is a one-year contract, so we, we could, you know, we would probably be having the same conversation around this time again next year once we get our experience rating and a quote back from.
If, if not, if not sooner, frankly, with knowledge of the one year and knowledge of the challenge we saw between the two plans this time.
But to get to Chris's point about the timeline and next steps, just so you guys know or are aware, we typically hold open enrollment during the month of October because those numbers feed directly into the budget you approve in, we hold open enrollment in October because those feed right into the budget you approve in November. If someone chooses to leave our plan, that, we reflect that in the budget you adopt to make sure we're accurately reflecting everything we can in the budget. So with that, open enrollment is typically done the last week of October. We make education, emails, sessions throughout October. October fourth is kind of our target deadline to have all of our open enrollment materials done and out that week. So just some context for you guys why we're asking for some action tonight or direction tonight from all of you.
Go ahead, Gary.
Yeah, Al, you talked about Dean had, Dean had the option of like six point nine percent for the first year and. for the first year and 9.3 or something for a second year, is kind of a guaranteed increase or a, you know, maximum? And Courts didn't offer that at all?
Correct. Um, in the past, we were able to, just the fact that we work with as many public employers in the area, we were able to see Courts do something similar to what Dean was having on the table, maybe not to the extent that Dean had in the past, but certainly better than just the present year. So, to, in the end, the reason they, the repeated note of, we'll maybe looking at this next year, maybe earlier than this time, but next year at this time, whereas Dean is saying not only for 2022, but 2023 and 2024, they put a worst-case scenario on the table to assure that you're not gonna get a 14% increase or something to that effect.
That's, that's one of my concerns, if we get 13.9 this year, and now it comes back again next year and they go another, you know, 12% or something, you know, Dean is saying 7% or 6.9, um, and I agree with Chris, it'd be great to work with the school district. I'm not sure when their agreement is up, um, but how do you pool the two?
Is that something you can share, or no? Under your guidance?
It's, I mean, it's under public record that they were, it was shared that they were under a five-year arrangement based on their size and their clinic engagement, and I think there's two years left in their scenario, but that, when you speak to pooling, frankly, um, I'm not sure, the, the, I would not worry about when their arrangement is done, I would say, frankly, um, the conversation can be done at any point in time.
Okay.
Okay, I'm good.
Any other comments right now? Okay, Caitlin, did you say you wanted?
Oh, Nyla had a comment.
Oh, sorry, Nyla.
I understand Gary's concern, you know, what will happen next year, but I think at this point, we need to do the best that we can for the employees this year, and, um, wait and see what next year brings. I mean, that's not all we can do sometimes, because we don't have a magic ball.
So Caitlin, moving that to the 88%, what is the employee portion of that going to be?
So moving, um, yeah.
Which slide do you want?
So if we move, if you stay with Courts on this slide, and you move up to that 88% um, premium share, the single coverage goes from 2547 per month to 6964 per month. The family plan goes from 6334 per month to 17316 per month, so underneath that, under staying with Courts, it's, all those numbers are right underneath there.
Okay. So one thing I'll just point out to the board is, as we come up to the end of the year, when we're talking about employees and their raises, COLA, COLA adjustments, things like that, uh, I, I just feel we need to be very cognizant of making sure employees don't go backwards. It's very difficult when your check goes backwards, um, with benefits, and I think with that COLA adjustment, I think we probably have it in around 2% right now.
Currently.
Um, we're gonna be right in the ballpark, um, of keeping it so people at least are even, not going backward for the most part. Obviously, with different wages for different people, that's gonna fluctuate some, but, um, I just think we want to keep that in mind as we go forward here, with potentially making a choice. Okay? Anything else?
Um, that's our presentation.
Okay. So, we have some choices, and we need to make this basically this evening, is that correct?
If you could, that would be much appreciated.
So open enrollment is a month away, and I know that there's a lot that goes into an open enrollment, and my last comment really is, um, several people hit it right on the head, but this is a very intimate decision for people, and COVID has been a challenge for everybody, including the healthcare system, obviously, in addition to our employees, the stresses that have come with it, the masks, the not having events, um, the mandates that we've had placed on us, um, from different places, a- all of those things are, are part of what's going on with our employees, and I think that right now, this isn't a good time for us to make a change. So, um, my opinion is of wanting to keep it where it's at, but move our, um, employee contribution to the 88% for this year. And then direct staff to work with Al in talking with the, starting the conversations with the school district, I can be part of those as well, um, to look at a potential switch for next year. Courts is only giving us one year anyway, so just give us an opportunity to explore that, see what could be done. And for the employees that are, um, wanting to switch to Dean, um, that might come next year. Um, for this year, the employees that are with Courts, if, if we choose to do this, they'll, they'll be happy, um, with this decision, um, probably overly happy, um, and, and very relieved, um, with some of their situations that they currently are going through. So, Gary?
I, I just heard on the news this morning, someone, they were making a comment about people are getting surprised now with COVID, if they have COVID, they go to the hospital, where it used to be covered 100%, they said a number of insurance companies now, you know, aren't covering it, and people are very surprised when they start getting bills if they had to go in for care. So I don't know how that, how that's covered any different under Courts than it would be under, you know, Dean, if there is any difference.
I wouldn't see that as a differentiation.
Okay. And I guess I, I mean, it's tough for me, I've had Dean for probably 25 years, great coverage, I feel, you know, very comfortable there, but, you know, I did have a number of employees to me, you know, came to me and just said, Gary, this would be really hard on our family to make this switch right now, you know, concerned about getting new doctors and concerned about, you know, they didn't seem to be concerned about costs as that much were just about the comfort level they, they have right now. So, I'm probably, you know, leaning more near cap right now, Chris. Stay with them.
Nyla?
I agree with you. We need to do the best we can for our employees.
Phil?
Stick with it.
Sam?
Courts, I thought you summed it up well, Chris.
Darren?
Yeah, I agree. I think, um, our staff's our most valuable asset in our community, and, um, in the middle of a pandemic, it's not a right time to ask people to change, and there's overwhelming support from the staff to stay, so.
Okay, so, I'm just gonna close then, we'll need a motion in a second here, um, but Dean is a really good health system, Courts is a really good health system, there's not, either the, we're fortunate in Madison, um, with, with the care that we have and, and people have access to. So don't, don't think that my going towards Courts right now was really saying Dean's not good, Dean's awesome, Courts is awesome, I have Dean, okay, personally, all right? My wife went through a situation we went to outside of, we were in a position we could afford to do it, there's many people that aren't, um, with a $6,000 potential out of pocket. So, um, that's why, why I want to just make sure that our Dean representative is here, Al is here, you know, you know, um, very well, we have great healthcare in Madison, in the Madison market. So, I'm gonna make the motion that we stay with Courts for one year and move our employee participation to 88%. Do I have a second?
I second it.
Clarification, it's the employee partic- employer participation to 88%.
Yes, thank you.
Employer participation.
Employer contribution will be 88%. I don't think the employees would have liked that.
We didn't survey that question.
That question probably wouldn't have bothered, all right.
I'll second it.
Okay, so we have a motion, a second. Any other comments? Okay, call the question, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, posed? I just have it. Thank you, Al.
Can I have one more comment?
Sure.
I just want to recognize the work and effective work Caitlin, Caitlin and Todd, that Caitlin did an exceptional job in terms of the staff communications and feedback, so I just wanted to recognize that for what it is.
Thank you.
Thankful to you.
I think so.
Okay. Whew. Downside to a T and a 95 mask, we're hot. Okay.
Yeah, Phil's coming.
Yeah, let's go.
All right, next we have discussion and update on diversity, equity, and inclusion initiatives. We'll wait for Dr. Random to come back in. By the way, for obvious reasons, Dr. Random stepped out for, um, the vote on this. Welcome back, Bill.
I missed you.
You did not.
Yeah.
Okay, next we have discussion and update on diversity, equity, and inclusion initiatives. Todd?
Oh, sorry. Uh, let me switch focus here. Okay, to our packet, um, if you take a peek in your meeting packet at, let's see, what page is that one? No, my screen isn't coming up.
50, page 50.
Page 50? Um, so, as, as you probably remember about a year or two ago, we started a partner together with the Create Wannakee Committee, that's not coming up, and the Wannakee Neighborhood Connection to coordinate a number of programs that were called Building Connections. And the, the initiative really was to, um, tell the, tell stories of, uh, Wannakee's population, um, and the people who are calling Wannakee home, which is, as you heard earlier today with some of the public comments, which were accurate, that there's a lot to the diversity of our community. We're continuing that Building Connections program, it's really a springboard from the Community Learning Project that we did, uh, over the course of the past year, and we've laid out, um, nearly a year's worth of programming for our citizens to engage, um, and learn and grow. Um, so, uh, we have six different programs, uh, some workshop experiences and book discussions, they're laid out in the flyer, it's easy to find this on social media or any of our posting places, um, there's a cha- a, a register button so we can make plans, but this includes everything from a program by a group called Braver Angels about bridging the, the divide, and that's about, that's about how communities can have tough conversations, um, while there's disagreement in the room, there's agreement in how to communicate well with one another. So that's what, for that program's about, there's gonna be a poverty simulation, and then some reading in relation to the variety of race, culture, and identities in society, um, undocumented Americans, so, uh, the Latinx population in our community, as well as, um, the plight of Asian-Americans today. So, um, I'm really pleased that we've been able to put together the program, and the purpose for this item today is to promote that and to encourage resident involvement.
Okay, thanks for that update, Todd. Where, where can the public, where is this posted that public would know about it so they could be aware and participating?
Um, and I know WNC has posted in all their posting places, our library has been posting, and then the Village on its multiple, multiple, uh, uh, social media feeds have made that available.
Perfect.
Um, the, Roberta Bowman at the Tribune has also done a nice job of, uh, sharing the work of, of the diversity work.
Thank you. Board members, any questions for Todd?
I just want to say that, uh, thanks to Gabe, I had a meeting last week with our librarian, our, uh, Gabe, Neighborhood Connection, Dean Meyer, one of my business partners, and one of our key Hispanic employees, and, uh, we worked on a lot of stuff that, where we could come up with ways that they could find more answers and more and more classes so they could be comfortable with our language and the skills of the computers and everything they're gonna be using.
And to piggyback off of that, I'll note that as part of our university year collaboration, we've been, got a number of projects focusing on DEI. Um, they call it a match when they connect a student or a class with one of our initiatives, and they've matched two grad students who are gonna be completing a communications audit, they're gonna look at all the ways in which the Village sends messages to our citizens, and analyze that based on, uh, language limitations or access limitations, for example, blindness, um, or deafness as a, uh, something that, that we can be better at in communicating to our public. Consider the newsletter, our website, Chris and I were, or, I was mentioning to Chris that we send out, we send out about 100 letters every two months to new residents. I, we sign the letters, and, um, I, I've seen a lot of, um, a lot of names that, uh, are Hispanic names, and I realize as I flip over the letter, there's an entirely bla- blank side to the letter, I'm like, we could put a Spanish version right there, just like that, and be working towards better communications with our community. So with those two students from the grad school, they'll be working with Gabe and administration to, um, review all of our communications.
Perfect. Thank you, Todd. Okay. Next one, next item we have is discuss and take action on proposed amendment to ordinance 6 dash 45-3 regarding restrictions on special Class B fermented malt beverage special event license as it pertains to fencing. Caitlin?
Um, so the police committee recently reviewed a request from community groups in Wannakee to reduce the double fencing requirement at special events, um, who choose to serve alcohol. Currently, we have a, if, um, an event chooses to put up a four-foot fence, we have a double fence requirement, or if they don't want to do double fence, they have to do a six-foot chain link fence. Um, so this is any group that requests a special, um, license, a picnic license, what we call them. Uh, so the police committee reviewed this request from the community groups and recommends that the Village Board, um, discuss, and they recommend, discuss this proposal, and they recommend that we, um, amend our ordinance to allow for a single fence, um, minimum of four feet tall. Uh, please also remember that as part of these picnic requests, we do require security, identifiers of who is 21 and things like that, so it's not just the fencing that controls the, the liquid or the, uh, purchase and indulgence of liquor. Um, the police chief is here as well, if there's any questions for him, but staff recommends, uh, that we amend the ordinance to go down to a single minimum four-foot fence for these events.
Bill, I know this was one of your topics.
This is on our thing, just 'cause, well, we ran the St. John's picnic for years and we've never, I gotta say, putting up the second layer fence, maybe I'm just getting too old. But we haven't really had no troubles over the whole timeline, it's a different demographic who comes to the events generally. Putting up the single layer, I, I think is still safe and effective, and we actually rely more on people checking as they come in than anything else, so.
And we, like, like you said, we still require a single point of entry, staffing and things like that, so.
I can, I can speak from, since last weekend, you know, we didn't have, you know, any issues that I knew of all, and the, the one thing it is for all these service clubs that do the work, as Bill can talk to, uh, we put in, I think, 68 posts, and if you had to put in 140 posts, it's not only putting them in, it's taking them out, I mean, it just, it's a very difficult task to do, uh, we haven't had issues in the past, so I'd make a motion, we amend, um, the ordinance 6 dash 45 dot 3 to a single fence.
Okay, a motion by Gary Hertzberg, seconded by Dr. Random. Uh, any other comments?
Chris, can I just, one, uh, for clarification to your last comment about this past weekend and, and Oktoberfest, just so people aren't confused by the fact that there was not a fence at that location, understand that that is actually in Westport, in the town of Westport, and aren't under the same regulations, um, of the Village Code.
Thank you, I was gonna point that out.
Yep.
Okay, so we have a motion, a second. Uh, Adam, I assume when this was discussed at the police committee, the idea behind double fencing is for underage drinking?
Correct.
To prevent this, the, did we have a lot of underage tickets in, in any of the events that we had, were given out from the events we were having in the last several years?
No, in the last, in the last five years, I can't think of an underage drinking ticket that was written during an event like that. Uh, Doc Random mentioned, the security guards that are posted at those gates often help, you know, we often have a lot of staff around, our problems have not been in that area of underage drinking.
Okay, perfect. Thank you. Okay. With that, I will call the question, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, posed? I just have it.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right, next we have discuss and take action on recommendation to rescind the appointment of Jeffrey Smith to the Community Development Authority.
Yeah, you saw, you saw in your packet that, um, Jeff Smith has been a member of the CDA since, uh, well, for, for several years now, um, his work, it's just been very difficult for him to attend, and he acknowledges that challenge, and he's acknowledged that, um, it might, that, that he would understand if a replacement would be considered. So that's what we're asking tonight, the first step, uh, and we do have an interested member of the community, but the first step would be to, uh, establish the vacancy by, uh, by removing Jeff Smith as a CDA member.
So moved.
Motion by Gary Hertzberg?
Second.
Second by Phil Williams. Any other comments or questions for Todd?
Um, just a question, how long are the terms to the, is, the Jeffrey Smith term goes till 2023. Are they all two-year, two-year? They're, I believe they're four years. This is a by-state statute. Yeah, okay.
And when we started, we had staggering?
Yes.
In there, so there was that opportunity, so. Okay, any other questions, comments? Okay, I'll call the question, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, posed? Aye. Posed? I have it. Next we have discuss and take action on recommendation to appoint Tricia Braun to the Community Development Authority to fulfill Jeff Smith's term.
Yes, and Tricia, her information is in your packet as well. A great deal of experience in economic development, having been an economic developer with communities in California and Minnesota, I believe, and then moved to Wannakee probably eight or nine years ago. Lives here, I think, in the downtown area, but she had a career with WDC, the Wisconsin Economic Development Commission, and rose to the level of Chief Operating Officer of that organization. She's since left the organization and is now on the other side of the table working for JP Cullen, which also with knowledge of the construction industry can bring good talent to the CDA as well. So we think she's got a, a strong resume and would be a good addition to the CDA.
Questions?
It's not a question, because she's not here. I was kinda hoping she might come because I heard a rumor, and I don't know if there's any truth to it or not, and I wanted to, I heard that she had been involved with the Foxconn project and I just wanted to ask her what her responsibilities were with that and also ask what she took away from the project, what she learned from it and just get her overall view on that. But she's not here, so I can't ask her, I guess.
Yeah, well, she, she, I know she was, she was the Deputy Secretary, the Under Secretary, whatever you call it, in COO during that negotiation, so she certainly knows a lot about what perhaps I would say worked and didn't work. We all learn as we go through big things like that, so, but I'm not gonna speak for, except to confirm that she was the Under Secretary during that negotiation.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, Sam?
I would just like to request that when we have midterm vacancies like this in the future, that we put on social media that we're gonna have a vacancy because I know we have applications on file and all that, but I think people would be compelled to apply if they know that there is an opening. So just something to consider for the future, not with this one.
Yeah, I would also just say that people in the community, if you want to be on committees, please apply and they're, they're going on file and Caitlin keeps track of all of them and when committee appointments come available, that's, that's when they're really, come to the forefront. You know, a couple of them are generally recommended potentials and then we pick one from that and then it's recommended to the board. So, but yeah, I don't see why we couldn't.
Yeah, I would, I would really like us to do that.
Okay, so we have.
And then a motion to approve Tricia Braun to the CDA.
Okay, a motion by Gary Hertzberg?
Second.
Second by Aaron Moran. Any other comments? Okay, call the question. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Posed? I have it. Next we have discuss and take action on proposal from Councilman Huntsker to assist the village with community aquatic facilities planning. Sue, are you here tonight to talk about this or is?
I'm gonna let Todd start and then I'll jump in with the answer questions that people have.
I was gonna say I'll let Sue start, now I'll jump into the questions that people have. No, we can, we can take team this and, and Chris as well. COVID caused a stumbling block for the work that you had authorized us to pursue and that included, and Sue did a great job in her memo in your packet, talking about that journey. But we solicited proposals from, from the aquatics specialty industry to help us on our journey to determine what it was that we felt we wanted to do with public aquatics in our community. We received a number of proposals. We had a diligent process to review them and we vetted them and we were frankly prepared to bring one forward to people that we started with, the world changed. And we, we took a break, we took a pause, we focused on the, the other things that were essential for us to focus on during, during that period of time. Chris had, Chris though, through that time has challenged us to continue being ready, keeping our eyes and ears open and that process has brought us more information, some new perspective and new opportunity with a firm that we're gonna be recommending to you tonight for us to, to kick off with. But I guess with that, I'll pause and see if Sue wants to jump in or if there's some questions about our past work to date.
I guess the one thing that I want to add is our project, I think, is complicated. I think deciding what is best for the village when it comes to aquatics is not a simple question. It's, I think some communities know that they wanna build an outdoor pool, for example, and figuring out exactly how many lanes and how many water slides fit within your budget is a pretty simple conversation. But as we've talked about aquatics with our community, there has been a very wide range of opinions about, about what is best. And what I'm, I'm very excited about the firm that we are bringing to you tonight. This firm does nothing but study aquatics across the country. They are experts in this field and they have experience all the way from a really nice spray park in a local neighborhood park all the way to a multimillion dollar indoor aquatics facility that might bring people to our community just for that purpose. And I don't know where we're gonna land on that spectrum, but I do feel that they have the experience to help us through that community conversation to figure out what is gonna be the best tip for us.
So I do wanna, just to be very, very clear in, in detailing for you what we've done and maybe what's a little out of the ordinary. So how many firms did we have respond to our RFP a couple of years ago, Sue?
I think there were a total of eight teams.
Eight, eight firms?
Well, teams of firms.
Eight teams, right, right, right. Certainly. And so, and they responded to a, a request that we put out there, so we received those, a number, we interviewed?
Three.
Three. Again, like I said, we had, we had one we thought we could move forward with. The firm that we're recommending tonight, if I understand it correctly, was a potential partner in a team from one of those proposals. What, what we have done is approached that firm, that firm that was a team member and approached them directly about solely serving us on this project. What we, what we've learned and what we believe is that what's been presented to you in your packet will achieve the extent to which all the other proposals were going to serve us and we feel, we believe that they presented a more competitive price than the firms that we felt could have done that job for us. So while we didn't go back out for bid, I just wanna kinda lay it out there, we didn't go back out for bid. We have recent bidding documents that demonstrate the cost in the marketplace and I think we're bringing, I'm certain we're bringing you something of greater value at, at least the same level of expertise, if not more. So I, and we're happy to address questions about that process. We've been discussing with Chris for several months about how, how, how we step through, through this process and we kinda had Chris's blessing to take this approach and bring it in front of you today.
So I'll just make my comments and be nice as I can here with, with Todd and Sue. I basically said that we have authorization to get this done. We put it on the shelf during COVID, which was the appropriate thing to do, but I would like to have it in the form that we can have something on a referendum for the spring election. So I asked Todd and Sue to push that forward. This is something that's been very talked about in the community. I've, I've, I've been very supportive of a community pool that we would have one here in Wannakee for people that would be affordable for everybody to use in our, in our community. Also bring, I think that this particular group in, in talking with them, as we interviewed them, are going to provide us with opportunities for discussion in the community. If you read through, you'll see that, that community input is gonna be huge in this and we talked about referendum for this. This is something new to the community and I'd like to get it in front of the community to have them decide once and for all how we wanna move forward with something like this. So that will hopefully take place in our April election.
I have a question.
Yeah?
Under feasibility study on, see, it says web-based survey. Is there any possibility of getting some hard copies of that out so that senior citizens can get ahold of those and then those be processed?
Of course.
Okay, thank you.
Absolutely.
Sure, this is a, this is one of the top firms and this is what they do.
Okay.
So we're gonna get great, great results, great input from the community. That's what this is about, to make sure we're doing what's best for the community. If the community says, you guys go pound sand, we'll go pound sand and maybe look at a different direction of something. But this is, this is gonna put it to the community to decide, so. What do we need to, we need to make a decision on this, right, to approve it? Does anybody have any other questions, I guess, beforehand?
I have a question. I think you hit it right on, Sue, like we have such a unique situation. We have like large community pools and neighbors with flashlights, all these things. What would the steering committee look like? Has that already been formed? I just saw that in there too, like, is that something that would fall under like a village committee or?
It would be subject, it would be like any other public meeting.
Okay.
Subject to open meetings.
Okay.
If, yeah, if, I think, I think we have room to discuss the best approach to community participation. I'll tell you that if, if, if the board convenes a group of any sort by the board's authority, that group has to follow the open meeting rules, just as you do.
I'll move we approve the aquatics feasibility study with Councilman Huntsker.
Okay, a motion by Aaron Moran, second by Dr. Random. Any other comments? Okay, I'll call the question. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Posed? I have it. And then our seventh item is discuss and take action regarding sale of village-owned property and related agreements at six oh seven Reeve Drive, current location of Country View Apartments. So before we would go into closed session, Brian, I'm not sure which person asked at the beginning, but they asked about this being in closed session and.
So, as, so this is addressed in pages seventy-four and seventy-five of your packet and as it states there, there is an existing lease. So we own, the village owns the property. There's a lease with Heartland Wannakee to operate their affordable housing on the property. The lease runs through 2044. I would, I mean, the lease is a public record. If anybody wants to see it, they can, they can make a request for it. I think if you, if you look at the lease, you will see that it was negotiated back in 1994. This is definitely a below-market rent that we receive. I think it's about $12,500 annually. I know there's some escalators in there, starting, I think, pretty soon, but it's, it's a very, it's not a significant escalator. And so the reason why I think we did, we haven't put it out to bid is we're not gonna get, it's encumbered by a lease. People aren't going to be interested in acquiring the property subject to the lease and only owning the land because we do not own the improvements on the property. The, the tenant owns the improvements. We did, however, get an appraisal for the property, also a public record. And so when we did the appraisal, we asked the entity to appraise the land as if there was not a lease on the property because we knew that the value would come back so low if you were gonna appraise the land subject to a lease for another 20 years, that it wasn't gonna do us any good. We weren't really gonna find the value of the land. We got the appraisal. It's for $570,000 and that is, as part of the negotiations, what we're asking for if we are in fact going to sell the land. But the bottom line is, there's really only one entity that would be interested in purchasing this property right now and that is the, the tenant. So that's the reason why we didn't do a bid. It just, it wasn't gonna be, I mean, and you could still do it if you want to, but I would recommend not doing it. I just, whatever the cost is gonna be, there's not giving any value to the village in doing that.
And as part of this negotiation, there's three items that we're gonna discuss in closed session, as part of that. Chris?
So the, essentially, the, 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 what, what we would convey the land for is not really an issue. Everyone's agreed that it's gonna be for the appraised value that we have at $570,000. The question becomes whether or not we wanna place any restrictions on the use of the property and I think as we've talked about before, not necessarily with this property, but with other properties, our ability, if we want to, I'm not saying that we have to, but our ability if we want to impose restrictions on land is greatest when we own the land and then we sell it. And so we are still in the process of negotiating what those terms, what potential terms would be regarding any restrictions on the property and that's why, you know, I, I, we need to get your feedback and we need to know exactly where you are at with the restrictions. It is definitely the possibility that the board may value one restriction or two restrictions over a third and we just can't have the other party knowing exactly where, you know, the example would be. Okay, I'm willing to give in on one as long as I get the other two, but, you know, we, we can't have that other party knowing what that discussion is or else obviously we've completely killed our bargaining positions as we go back to negotiate with them.
Okay, thank you.
Make motion to go into closed session.
Second.
I gotta read first.
And before you do, one note, I don't expect action tonight. I expect feedback and then a final form of agreement would be an open session discussed, discussed publicly with the board of trustees before you take final action on any sale.
Correct. If you're gonna, if you're gonna convey, if you ultimately you decide to convey the property, that's gonna have to come back as part of an open session discussion.
Okay. The village board may convene in closed session as authorized by Wisconsin Statute 19.851E for the purpose of deliberating or negotiating the investing of public funds or conducting other specified, specified public business whenever competitive or bargaining reasons require a closed session. The village board may reconvene in open session and discuss and take action on a subject matter discussed in closed session.
Motion to go into closed session.
Motion by Gary Hertzberg?
Second.
Second by Phil Williams. Phil, come on.
Anna Frank?
Yes.
Phil Williams?
Yes.
Bill Random?
Yep.
Chris Oner?
Yes.
Aaron Moran?
Yes.
Sam Prosser?
Yes.
You were in closed session.